All right, welcome everyone to October 30th Shakopee City Council Workshop on Future of the Fire Department. Ms. Weckman, could you please call roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sherman, here. Counselor Lehman-
Here.
Counselor Clay-
Here.
Counselor Whiting-
Here.
Mayor Tapke.
Here. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
We have none.
All right. Anything from council? Counselor Whiting?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Same about Counselor Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. I don't remember three. Discussion of Fire Department Fiscal Year 2013 Budget. Chief Coleman, it's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council for having us tonight. We're going to discuss the 2013 budget coming up. And what we're looking for tonight is our discussion, what staffing levels does the council wish to fund for 2013? In the initial budget, preliminary budget, we have four full-time firefighters that address our daytime response problem that we're having. Six paid-on-call firefighters to prepare for Station Three. Or if the council decides we can do none of the above and leave our staffing levels the way they are today. I wanted to start out just to show you what the timeline looks like on a fire. On a normal fire with all the conditions perfect, the house sealed up, everything's going well, a smoke detector is going to activate in about one and a half minutes, somewhere in that area. It's going to take about a minute for somebody to report that fire and another minute for us to be dispatched. We have our response time, which is about five minutes. And then after that nine minutes, if all the conditions are perfect, we get flashover. At the initial, at flashover, there's no sustainable life left. We are strictly in a recovery mode and we are putting out the fire the best we can. The reason I bring this for you, everything that we do is time-sensitive. There's no, yeah, we can get there when we get there and things will be okay. What we do is time-sensitive, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. Our current staffing for the daytime response, I took our first six months of 2012 to look at how long does it take to get our first truck in service out of a station? Now, this data came right off the county web, our county CAD system. So our average response time for a truck to leave the fire station is seven minutes in the first six months of 2012. What that does to our response times, I took that same six-month period from January 1, six months out, to get the first truck on scene. As you can see by the red line, that's the response time that NFPA has set as a standard for us, which is roughly nine minutes, or it is nine minutes. Our average response time came up to be 13 minutes. All the numbers that you see in there from the beginning, you know, 11, 16, whatever number you pick, that is the actual time that our first arriving fire truck was sitting in front of the residence or whatever we need it to be at. If you look at some of them that are below the line, I can tell you that the reason they're below the line is because we've had, we had multiple calls at the same time. So either A, we had people at the station, or we were responding to another call or at another call and we responded a truck from there, which made our response times meet that criteria. So just to recap that all, our average time for a first truck leaving a fire station is seven minutes. Our average time for first truck on scene is 13 minutes. The NFPA standard for a city our size is nine minutes 90% of the time.
Nine minutes for which?
On scene?
On scene. On scene is nine minutes 90% of the time.
Nine minutes from when the truck leaves the station or nine-
Nine minutes from the time of page.
So we're 11 minutes on average?
We are, we are, our average response time out of a station is seven minutes from the time of page. So we're, we've lost seven minutes already.
So 20 minutes is the average time it takes to be out in front, at the front door of the-
13 minutes. The average truck gets there in 13.
So we're not adding 13 on to the seven, we're-
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
So your seven minutes out the doors are average and 13 minutes on scene. Now, the NFPA standard 1720 is staffing and deployment. The standard is not mandated, but the local jurisdiction has the authority to accept, to manage the response times and the level that we want to be at. The response times, I just want to warn you or tell you, the response times that fall short are likely to be issues in legal action against the city or the fire department. Across the United States, they have used that standard as a guideline. So if you end up going into court, they'll pull up 1710 and said, are you meeting the standard or are you not meeting the standard? As long as the local jurisdiction says this is what we can afford and this is what we can do, we'll be all right with whatever standard the council decides to set.
Chief, with that standard, the nine-minute on-scene standard-
Yes.
Is, does NFPA make any qualifications or differentiate between volunteer, fire department, paid-on-call fire department, full-time fire department, that kind of stuff? Or is it just nine minutes across the board, no matter who you are?
1720 is paid-on-call combination fire departments. There's a 1721, which is professional, they call it professional firefighters, career firefighters. They have a different standard they have to meet.
And what's, is that significantly lower than that?
Yeah, actually with a full-time department, I don't, didn't do the big research on it, but I believe it's eight minutes. So it's a minute different. I will get to where we, how we fall into that category.
Okay.
Here, there it is for you. The city of Shakopee, they work off a square mileage. We have 29.55 square miles in the city of Shakopee. Our population is roughly 37,000, it's a little more than that, which gives the city a 1,252 people per square mile, which puts us in that urban area where that's where we come up with the standard from out of NFPA from nine minutes and at 90% of the time. Now, we don't have to meet that in our rural area because we can choose different areas. So our rural area is different than our city area. You know, I hate to be, I'm worried about the citizens in the Shakopee. Of course, I want to take care of our townships, but this, by adding these personnel, we will help our township as well.
Counselor Sherman?
I have a question then. So on the numbers that you, the data you showed us previous for the averages that we're at, does that exclude any calls then outside of the city of Shakopee? Or does that include Louisville Township or other?
There are a couple of calls in there that would, there ain't more than three or four that are actually in the township. I prob, I didn't go through and look at that now that you mentioned it, but I'm pretty sure there's probably a couple of calls in there that are township.
Okay. So that could be, I mean, even if it's four out of the whole batch-
Yeah, the whole bunch. It's not going to vary that-
A small amount of influence.
Correct.
And it could skew the average.
Right.
It's not going to be that big of a deal. Maybe it's 6.9 instead of 7. Actually, the response time out of the station wouldn't matter.
Correct.
It'd be the on-scene. Currently, we have 46 paid-on-call firefighters authorized by the city. Our daytime available is limited mainly due to employees unwilling to let their employees leave during the day. Distance, even if they can leave, can they get here fast enough? We do have some residents or some employees that work across the river. They can come on working structure fires, but the time that it takes them to get here is well into the 10-minute mark or 15-minute mark. So they're, they're helpful, but it's not going to solve our problem. And then we do have some childcare issues where we have parents that work alternate shifts. So maybe the firefighter works nights, the wife works during the day. They're watching their children during the daytime hours and sometimes they bring them and we get babysitters or grandma picks them up. So that still takes time for that all to evolve and take place. The way this breaks down with 46 firefighters, three of them which are chiefs that respond directly to the scene. Currently, right now, all three of our chiefs do work, or two of our chiefs work outside of our fire district. One is, works at home, but does, does have some travel, traveling with his work. We have one vacancy. We have 24 firefighters that work outside of the city. 10 who work inside the city but cannot leave their job. So on a good day, we have eight firefighters possibly to respond and four of them being city employees. We did look at some alternatives to, to look at before we went to the full-time people. We looked at solely running people out of Station One and basically shutting Station Two down during the day. What we, what we've tried to do is our normal response on a, on a truck is five. That gives us an attacked, complete, equipped truck to do our first two in, two out, lay our hydrant line, they're self-sufficient. They can get started on the fire. What we have, what we have done to try to get rid of some of that response time is we've dropped that down to three or four personnel we're letting them roll with. So three people show up at this station, three people at this station, they roll, they get to the station or get to wherever we're at and we try to regroup them and get everything going. That gets very complicated because our SOGs, the way we have them set up right now, is that every seat on that truck has a responsibility when they get there. So that truck can maintain itself and do what it needs to do to get going on a fire. The other thing we have done also, been doing it for a long time, is our full-time city employees have gear at both stations. They can respond to either station. We have one person that does work, lives in the Station Two area. He works out in the industrial park. He responds to Station One during the day because it's closer. 10 years ago, eight years ago or so, we used to have nine people coming out of the industrial park from two companies, which gave us our great response. We ain't getting that no more. And that was a lot for them companies to, to take. I mean, they actually let nine people out of the two companies go. By moving everybody to one station, even if it's three over here, the time that it's going to take them to drive their personal vehicle to the other station, we've already, we're probably losing three minutes by the time they're getting over there already. I believe our response time would still be seven minutes coming out of the station. Relying more heavily on our full-time employees. Our office surface worker was discussed as staff level back during budgets. That's a whole different skill set. And how do we, how do you train for both skill sets? So they can still do all the data entry work, which is a very demanding and job that needs to get done and also be a firefighter. Do we, do we let them off? Let the person off four hours early on a Friday so they can train on a Monday night so we don't have to pay overtime? There's just a lot of hurdles that we'd have to do to make that even feasible. Recruit and require more full-time employees from the city departments to be paid-on-call firefighters. Sure, we could, I mean, you could physically say every full, everybody in the city that gets hired from this day forward has to be a paid-on-call firefighter. Where do we, we start losing, in my opinion, customer service to our other areas. If the guys, right now, our public works people, when they're snowplowing, they cannot respond to a fire call. They need to plow the streets. If they don't plow the streets, we don't get the fire trucks through. I can, there's, when they're doing asphalt, they can't respond. There's numerous things they can, they can't respond when they're doing their other jobs. People have appointments that they have people coming in. No different than me standing up here tonight if I was some other city employee and I was a paid-on-call and my pager went off. I don't think you'd like it if I had to leave and let you sit in here with nothing to do but to wait for me to come back. So there's a lot of areas that I believe that would take a toll on the city as a whole if we make everybody be a paid-on-call firefighter.
We'd just make our own decisions without you.
Yeah, thanks. We just want you to make a decision. Expanding minimum qualification to allow people to work within a certain response time to be a firefighter. Right now, we have a response that you have to be within 10 minutes of an existing station to be a firefighter. So you could live in Prior Lake and as long as you could be within 10 minutes of a fire station, you can join our, join, be an employee of the city of Shakopee on the fire department. As far as taking people that work out of the, or live out of the area, maybe they work in town. Right now, we, we have 10 employees already that work in town. They can't leave their job. By, by extending that to other people that don't work in town or don't live in town and work here, I don't believe we're going to get that big of an increase in people that can leave. Our employees are not letting people go. And then the last option that we've always, we've been looking at for a long time was just using our paid-on-call folks to run a duty crew. Well, what really opened my eyes on that one was when we really started digging into it. We only have 46 people to deal with right now. And there's some HR issues. They can only work so many hours a week before we got to pay them benefits and everything else. And if we ran the duty crew from 7:30 to 4:30 in three, three-hour increments. So if you ran from 7:30 to 10:30, four personnel. And then from 10:30 to 11:30, four personnel. And 1:30 to 4:30, four personnel. That's 12 people a day, times that by five, I ran out of people. I'm sure, I'm sure we can, you know, get some people to work extra hours here and there. But the minimum, as far as I know, talking with HR is 14 hours is the max I can let them work or we get into benefits and other eligibility stuff that would come up. Any questions on that before I go any further?
Counselor Sherman?
Might I offer one other alternative? And this kind of does depend on our rate of turnover within our paid-on-call. But are we hiring our paid-on-call firefighters for their shift availability, so to speak? So are we talking to them about their daytime availability before we make an offer to hire someone as paid-on-call?
In years past, even when I got hired, 26 years ago, the first question they asked you, are you available for daytime calls? It was actually on the, on the application. As you know, if you're working in town and the employer says you can go, the box gets checked. A year later, once probation is up, they got to go where they can feed their families. The paid-on-call world is not going to feed their families. So if they get a job outside of, outside of the city or somewhere else, they go there. They may still live here and they're very valuable to us at night and during, when they have vacation time. But people are going to go where they can get a good decent job.
So it's changing as they join us and then they potentially change their other job?
Correct.
And that's what's changing, okay?
Correct. We looked at some scale opportunities, the best, you know, that we tried. We face challenges as our neighbors do too. But the geographical of the area is so large, if you look at Prior Lake, Savage and ourselves. We looked at having one, I'll call it, one truck centrally located in the Prior Lake area, 21 area. The geographic area that we all cover is so large that if that truck is down in the other end of Credit River Township and we get a call downtown, there's miles and miles between that. We'll never be able to get that response time where it needs to be. So that's where it comes. Using Prior Lake and Savage, they ain't going to get here any faster than we're doing today. So my recommendation, the best solution is to hire our four, four full-time firefighters to respond Monday through Friday for our daytimes. The new employees, we'd like to get them on board by January 1, 2013 at a cost of $125,000. That would increase, just so you know, to about 275 with step increases and everything else in 2014. I'll take any questions you have before we move on.
Could you go back one for me?
Yeah, go back to that last.
Did you mean July 1st or January 1st? You wanted them on?
July 1st.
July 1st, sorry. Did I say January? I'm sorry.
Budgeted to start mid-year.
Mid-year.
How about the other paid-on-call that we have in the budget?
It's coming up in the next segment.
Counselor Lehman?
Do we know what the response time is on police to fire calls?
To medicals?
Fire calls?
Are police being dispatched to fire calls? Chief?
Normally, our, it all depends on the call.
House fire?
Yes.
You want to know what the response time is?
I can tell you that my response time is five minutes on an average and I am getting there approximately the same time PD is getting there.
Okay. So we do have people on the scene for, from a life-saving standpoint, under the, under the guidelines.
Well, he's not in gear.
Correct. Our police officers should not be going into a burning structure. That is unsafe.
Well, as somebody that's had a house fire in Shakopee, that's not factual. They go in the house to make sure there's nobody in there.
I would agree with you, but since 9/11, a lot of things have changed. Our standards have changed. We've learned a lot. In 26 years, I have learned a lot.
9/11? Terrorist in a house or, I'm not making a connection.
Since 9/11, there's been a lot of education about how we should be fighting fires and how we, why these people, firefighters, perished in that, in that. It wasn't, it was because we were being too aggressive and we weren't backing each other up and having accountability system. And that's what the new education has come out and we've learned from that.
Well, at any rate, they went and made sure nobody's in the house. The cops did.
They shouldn't be.
And do we know if we have any people working in Shakopee that are firefighters in other communities?
I would have to say, no, I do not know that question answered.
It would be, I was thinking, it would be nice if we, let's say we had five people working in Shakopee that are firefighters for other cities. And we may have people that live in Shakopee that are firefighters working in, in other cities. If they could respond to each other's calls and get credit at their home station. So let's say we have four people from Shakopee working in Savage and Savage has a daytime response problem like Shakopee does. If Savage Page goes out, they're already there. They could respond to Savage- quicker than they could to Shakopee, but they could get credit for responding to a fire call for their call load in Shakopee. And we could do likewise with all the surrounding cities.
As, as far as I know, if we're talking Savage, I know I-
Just an example.
Yeah. I, I don't know how many people there are like that, to be honest, but I'm sure I could check around and try to get that answered, question answered.
We know we have 10 that work outside of Shakopee.
We have 10 that work, we have 10 firefighters that work in the city of Shakopee-
Okay.
That cannot respond.
So we have 24 that work outside of Shakopee. Okay. So we have more than, quite a bit that could respond to whether, whatever city they're in, helping that city.
Yeah, and that could be as far as Plymouth, the Brooklyn Park.
Right. Right. But if that city has a daytime response problem, that is a potential solution because a person's already there.
The biggest question I think with that is that, I don't think it's that firefighters don't want to respond to things. It's employers being okay with them leaving work or having a job that it's okay-
Or the economics of it.
Yeah, exactly. That it makes sense.
Well, the economics is easy to fix. You just make daytime response calls 25, 30 bucks an hour.
Well, that, that would work if the employer let them leave.
Right, right.
If the employer still don't leave them, let them leave, we could pay them $100 an hour. It doesn't matter.
Right, but then you would have a true picture of whether it's an economic issue personally or if it's an employer not letting them leave.
If we're talking about paying firefighters $25 an hour, I think they all should be paid $25 a hour. It doesn't matter if they're responding day or night. They're underpaid to start with.
Well, I, I think, I think what I'm talking about is, is premium pay for the service that you're looking for. It's kind of like the Sunday matinee at the movie theaters cheaper than the prime-time one.
Counselor Whiting?
Is there any incentives, you guys have a call percentage that each firefighter needs to maintain? What is that number?
35%.
They got to make 35% of the calls. Is, is there anybody that's run into trouble with that 35% that may have been able to respond to daytime calls where we couldn't make an adjustment there? To say like if you responded to a daytime call, it would be like, it would increase your percentage of call response to like twice as many as a nighttime or weekend call. Would that help any?
We don't run into a lot of percentage problems from people that can make daytime calls. There, there are a couple, but I, it's not a big pool of them that's going to make a big difference.
Counselor Clay? You raised your hand earlier.
I did?
Yeah. You don't have to talk then.
Maybe I was going to comment that with Mr. Lehman's suggestion, I was also curious if, to have a firefighter from Savage responding to, with the Shakopee Fire Department. I mean, you, you train with your own people and your own teams and I can't imagine that your, every single thing you do is exactly the same from one department to another. So you'd wind up, if you're going to be crossing jurisdictions and you're going to need to do twice the training because you're going to have to do training both at Shakopee and Savage.
That would be correct.
I'm guessing, yeah.
Our, our, a lot of our accountability, how we keep track of people now and how we stage people has, is starting to come together in the last couple of years because we're working much closer together. But there are differences of what the first truck does or the second truck from department to department. So yes, there would be training issues that they would have to be cross-trained and do double training sessions with each department.
Mr. McNeil?
Chief, could you also comment on the turnout gear and where that needs to be stationed? And the cost of providing an extra set if someone has gear at their home station and they're going to be working out of another station?
Yeah, if, if we decide to move everybody to one station and we need to buy turnout gear for everybody, the turnout gear, just a coat and pants is about $2,000. You got to get them a helmet, a pair of boots that fit them, a face shield. So you're, you're right around that $3,000 mark by the time we outfit a firefighter from head to toe.
And if someone was going to be working out of a station that may not be in, that is not in Shakopee, somehow we have to get them outfitted at the other station as well?
That is correct. That is correct.
Got to carry their gear with them?
They sure could, but that will slow them down again. If they have to get it out of their trunk, carry it in, put it down, get dressed, instead of just getting out of the car, coming in and putting it on, cause it's all set, ready to go for them. There would be some time added to that.
Um, let's discuss a minute the, uh, idea about paying more for daytime response as opposed to nighttime response and that kinda thing. I've thought a lot about that and on the surface to me it makes sense. But the more I think about it, I don't like that idea because, um, none of the paid-on-call firefighters doing it for the money right now. I don't think, uh, if we're gonna pay them, pay everybody the same, the same way and no one is doing it because, at least my impression is, nobody's doing it because they like the money in it. They're doing it because they love working in the community and, um, uh, the money makes it possible, but adding additional money during the day seems like it takes it from being more the, the volunteer slash and paid-on-call work that people love to do to getting paid and, um, additional financial incentive for doing that kinda thing. Not that nobody wants the money and to make it make sense for everybody's lives, but I just don't know. What do you think about that, Chief? Is that?
I, I can tell you this, um, we have employees right now that make more money fighting fires than other firefighters. They get a blended rate from their full-time job to their paid-on-call rate, um, our, our city employees. So when they show up, they are making more money than the next firefighter standing next to them. And there are comments about that. There are concerns and, uh, people don't like it.
The other hand, it is federal law, so.
Yes.
What is federal law?
The way the city-
Blended rate that we have to pay as over time.
Alright.
As overtime.
Councillor Sherman.
Um, just trying to think through the paying a premium during the day, what it could allow people to do is have a negotiating leverage with their employer to say, you know, can I have flexibility and here's why? Or it could also give people an option to, maybe it would make greater sense to them to use personal time or other time to be able to respond to a fire if they were getting that premium pay. So it just, it kinda just changes the way of thinking of how do you negotiate with your employer to potentially be released during the day to go fi- fight a fire? It's, yeah, there's economics involved because it is a higher rate, however, it's just, it's kind of a point of leverage versus looking at it as a rate.
Councillor Lehman?
Well, I think it, it gives, gives us a, a better idea of whether an employer will let somebody leave or if they're not wanting to leave because they need to be at work making the money to pay the house bills or whatever.
Yeah.
The other question that I guess I had before we get too far off bases, back to the standards that are coming out, I keep reading about the requirement of sprinkling residential homes. Do we know when that's gonna happen?
No, I do not.
Okay. Keep seeing it and, uh, you know, it seems like, I can almost guarantee you, the minute we get a full-time fire department, all the houses are gonna have sprinkler systems in it. Just the way it seems to work, you know?
We, we still have the response time that we need to, even if it's sprinkled, we still have a response time to get there. Or the local jurisdiction needs to set that.
Sprinklers aren't gonna do all the work.
Councillor Clay.
Are you aware of any places where, cities where the city has a policy of reimbursing employers for allowing their paid-on-call firefighters to leave for a fire during work hours?
I am not.
That would be a good idea too.
Do you know of anyone like that or are you just tossing that out there cause it's a brilliant idea? Okay. Alright, let's move on to the second part now and then we'll, we'll circle back around.
Alright. The next session, uh, section, we'll, we'll be dealing with the third station, uh, out in South Bridge. That deals with ISO, which is the Insurance Service Office, which is a nonprofit company that basically comes out and does a risk assessment of, of the area, rates you one through ten, one being the best. Uh, the key factors is distance, equipment, water supply, training and record-keeping. Uh, the key here is the standard in distance. What they, what they, uh, what their standard in distance is, is they, they look for an engine within a mile and a half of every built-upon area and a ladder truck within two and a half miles. Now, this ISO rating impacts the insurance rates paid by our homeowners and our business people. And it really impacts our businesses. If you look at, uh, the way we're set up, uh, the center circle is Station One, um, the new Station Two that we just built and Station Three out in South Bridge. If I had my glasses, I'd be able to read this a lot better. Uh, Station One basically covers fifty, five thousand three hundred and three parcels. Station Two covers right now five thousand four hundred and eighty-one parcels and the proposed Station Three, uh, right now there's two thousand fifty-five parcels out there. Well, thank you.
Jeez.
I may need them again. Uh, the cost estimates right now, uh, that we were looking at was three million dollars, likely to be bonded. Uh, there's personnel costs, uh, training, gear, uh, full-time training chief, the thirty-one, three hundred and thirty-one thousand. Operating costs, which is utilities, debt services, three hundred and fifty thousand. And the, um, there'd be a, there may be a modest fleet ex- uh, expansion, which would be a grass rig at this point. We looked at this, uh, scaling with, uh, our opportunities to go with scale and, uh, work with our neighbors. Uh, Prior Lake and Savage have recently built what they're going to build. Um, they've got their area covered to our, uh, eastern border. Uh, it still leaves the, uh, we still have the gap around the South Bridge, uh, area and if we don't fill it, nobody else is going to. If you look at where the stations are located right now, the, uh, the red outline is the city of Shakopee. Um, you can see where our, our proposed third station would be out in South Bridge. We got Prior Lake Station Two on, just off of twenty-one. Uh, their station, that's Station Two. Station One is, uh, off of twenty-one also, Fish Point. And then Pr- uh, Savage's new station on O'Conne, on, uh, uh, what is it on now? Um,
O'Connell.
O'Connell, is that O'Connell?
The new-
No, the new one's on-
The fire, City Hall campus.
Yeah, City Hall campus. Yeah, Station One is on O'Conley. So if you look at that, they're, they've, uh, pretty much determined that where they're going to be. I don't see them in the near future, especially Prior Lake Station Two and, uh, Savage Station Two, which are really new, uh, moving them stations. Uh, the other one that is on there is Med Fire Station. Um, that kinda overlaps Prior Lakes. What are we waiting for? Um, are we waiting for the third fire station until the, uh, the third fire station has been in the CIP since two thousand. It was originally scheduled to be built in two thousand three. Does it still belong there? Are we waiting for the area to be fully developed? The tribal land has been purchased, which are, uh, our original projected of outbuild are, uh, what was gonna be built out there isn't going to be possible. We have two hundred and fifteen acres left to develop out there in that circle for Station Three. Uh, full build-out likely if everything goes the way it should. Should be about three hundred parcels, which is nine hundred and sixty-nine more parcels out there. Are we waiting for the Station One bond to be paid off? Uh, currently we're, we're, the levy for Station One bo- Station One bond is only half, is one-half of what it should be expended for, uh, Station Three bonds. Uh, freeing up money for the bond is only part of the equation. We would still need more money for operating and personnel costs. Are we waiting for, uh, resident outcry? One major in- incident out there could, could be tragic, could be a tragic. Um, increased resident pressure for Station Three. Puts us in a, that, this is gonna put us in a, in a reactive mode rather than a proactive mode. The relationship between Station Three and daytime. Building Station Three and staffing it with paid-on-call firefighter, it is expected to do little for our daytime response problem. Hiring full-time employees for daytime hours will benefit South Bridge area as well as the entire community. Hiring six paid-on-call firefighters without committing to a timeline for Station Three is of little value. Daytime response could be addressed by expanding the number of paid-on-call firefighters, but it would have to expand by much more than six individuals. It would be, need to be closer to twenty or twenty-five additional paid-on-call and a full-time training chief to provide daytime training. Still, this is no guarantee that we'd have daytime response. The recommendation, there is a gap that needs to be filled and no one else is going to fill it for us. However, given the limited resources, staff recommends addressing the daytime issue, problem first, and then planning to build the third fire station in two thousand seventeen, once the bonds of Station One has been paid off. Any questions?
Councillor Whiting.
Uh, is Station Three planned to be a full-size station or more of a satellite station with just truck bays?
Uh, it'd be a satellite station. Um, originally it was planned, uh, somewhat to look similar to Station Two that we just recently built. There was an extra bay put on that station, at Station Two for a linea. Um, if you, if we look at the demographics of that area, um, to get daytime response out of there, I think is going to be difficult at best. Um, so I'd be looking at more a, a two or maybe a three-bay station, you know, an engine, a rescue or something out of there and a small office area. So, uh, the way I look at it right at today's, without knowing the whole build-out there, it would be a little bit smaller than what Station Two was.
Mr. Mayor, if I could continue?
Yes.
Um, we are still required to respond to the tribal land that's within the Shakopee area. Am I correct?
Uh, no, we are not.
You don't have to do that.
As long as it's been put into federal trust land, uh, we, we have no-
Okay. Well, we would as a mutual aid.
We will respond mutually.
As we would with all the other cities.
Correct. I, I can almost guarantee if there's a fire out there, we're going.
Yeah, I don't wanna be in the position to have to be one incident away from having that outcry. I think a plan, my mind, is the way to go with that.
What does that mean?
I think, you know, I'm, I, I like the twenty seventeen idea with the bond paid off. I think we need it. We have too many assets out there right now. There's a lot of valuable properties that need to be protected and the bond rating would help those properties, you know, bringing that down.
Okay. Councillor Lehman.
Chief, what's our, what would our response time from Station One with a daytime crew to South Bridge be?
I, I'd estimate it at seven minutes. We have, we had a Riverside Fire Department out there. I left Station, Station, uh, One in my personal vehicle, admitted there in five and a half minutes. So in a big red truck after they put turnout gear, I, it's gonna be about seven minutes.
Okay.
Maybe eight.
So if we had a, a, you know, okay, what's our response at night? To the same area from Station One, if, if we didn't have the daytime crew there and it was a night call, that's probably the information that we have.
That, I didn't do the statistics on nighttime because, um, if I really look at our nighttime calls, once I get up and get dressed and I'm out the door, or a chief, one of the chiefs, that truck is screaming down our back end already. So I, in a, most of our chiefs are relying, are, are, uh, on scene in that five to six-minute mark from time of page. Doesn't matter if it's daytime or nighttime. So at, at night, that truck is, is coming already and so I, I didn't go out and look at all them statistics, cause common sense tells me that we're within that window.
So-
Out in South Bridge area, yes, it's going to be a little bit longer.
Well, what I'm getting at is, would we, would we need the third station if we had a full-time crew at Station One?
At night?
During the, well, during the day, we wouldn't need it, but that's why I asked what the response would be at night.
I would have to do some statistics on that. I would, I would have to venture, well, since I live out there, that's different. I can get there pretty quick, but, um, they're gonna be in that ten to eleven-minute mark. It's seven miles out there to the back end, so there's seven, seven minutes there right there. From Station One to the backside of South Bridge on the far side is about seven minutes, drive time, normally.
And you're taking sixteen, I take it.
Yes. And now with twenty-one down through there, so, I'm, I'm gonna guess by the time the guys, we, you know, at night, we're getting a truck in service in that four-minute mark. So seven, we're at ten, eleven minutes.
I was thinking, Mayor, if, uh, if we knew we could have a, a decent response time to South Bridge without the third station by having people waiting for the fire to happen. I mean, during the day, I think we could make it. I just don't know if we can at night.
Yeah.
So you could trade one for the, you could trade one for the other, but you gotta make sure that the statistics tell you that you're gonna make the nighttime call.
The only thing that we gotta be careful of is our ISO rating, if we're cared about that. Cause that's a mile and a half radius that you need an engine. Uh, Station One will not give you that, that rating.
Build a one, one bay and put an engine in it.
That's a possibility, yes. Anything's possible. It all depends how-
Mark?
Chief, just talking about ISO rating, can you, uh, just talk about, I mean, is one ISO rating, is that good for the entire community? Or do you have neighborhoods that may be at a different rating than others that might be closer to the station or in a rural area that does not have city sewer and water?
Once, once there's city water in it, uh, this is the city of Shakopee, so it's one-rated. Now, when we go to, we do Louisville and Jackson, they're a s- separate entity, so they get a different rating. So the city Shakopee is one entity. Doesn't matter if you live next to the station or out in South Bridge or, uh, out on Mar Street, have an industrial property out there. It, your rating is based off of what it, uh, that area is. Now, we have not had a ISO rating since South Bridge has been developed, so it's coming. Savage just went through theirs.
Councillor Whiting.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. Uh, what I'm hearing you saying is that we'd save all the businesses in the community and is that the households too would save on their insurance rating, so we'd save everybody money by having that station there.
Right.
I mean, obviously, we're not saving any money, but-
Yeah, it would not be just the South Bridge area.
It'd be the entire community.
Be the entire community. But right now, we're at a five. Um, we'd have to lower that number.
What, what was, do you know what any kinda impact would be if it was a six instead of a five?
No, I do not know that.
Okay, but it, it's a signi- it's a-
It's a significant one, yes. Actually, we would wanna go to a four, to lower the number, the better. We don't wanna go to a six.
Now, we talked a little bit about scale and to me, and, and you had that map there, but that seems, the third station seems like it'd be a good spot to be a conglomerate if scale ever had a one-stop spot to respond to, if that ever came to be. Is, is in your mind that, that would be a good area to respond to Savage and Prior Lake and um, Shakopee also?
Well, it, it's centrally located. Um, I can tell you this, that right now the- Well, it, it's centrally located. Um, I can tell you this, that right now, the, uh, Prior Lake, Savage, ourselves, MedFire, are working on a box alarm system, which would mean if we had a call in the South Bridge area and that station was there and it came in as a working fire, that station would get paged, maybe it's Prior Lake Station Two that gets paged second as a box, instead of drawing resources out of the other side of Shakopee and bringing them all the way across to keep us with protection.
So you would never see it as scale having multiple department personnel respond to a central station?
I don't think at this time Prior Lake and Savage would do that be, just for the simple fact is they just built them two stations and have their area covered.
And they know their equipment and things like that. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lehman.
I highly doubt insurance companies would lower rates. They'd find a reason to say it was increased for some other reason.
I, I probably don't disagree with you. I, I'm not a big fan of insurance companies either, so...
Can we go back to the, uh, the money slide? The three million dollars for the station, the three thirty-one personnel, three fifty for operating? All right, in this, so the personnel costs and the operating costs are annual costs, correct?
That is correct.
All right, so three million, is that all the gear for new firefighters? Does that include...
The construction costs?
The three million is just the construction?
Construction cost.
So...
That, that's an estimate. I mean, that's what we had for Station Two. I, I'm, I'm seeing the station in that, that many years, a little smaller station, we should be somewhat in the same ballpark.
All right, and, um, so the three thirty-one personnel cost, that's twenty to twenty-five paid-on-call firefighters?
Correct.
Plus the three fifty to operate it, custodial insurance and debt service and stuff.
Right.
Correct. If you add those together, that comes to six hundred eighty-one thousand. We have, what, one hundred twenty-five thousand? Did we bump that to one fifty-five next, one fifty next year? So your savings in two thousand seventeen, once the station number one is paid off, that would be available to go towards that, but you'd still be looking at about four hundred thousand dollars as your annual, uh, cost for care and feeding and operation of Station Number Three.
Okay, and then when do we need to begin ramping up? If we were to build it in twenty-seventeen, when do we need to begin hiring pa- paid-on-call firefighters?
Two thousand thirteen.
Yeah.
That's what the six paid-on-call firefighters are for. We'd hire six paid-on-call, two thousand thirteen. We'd hire another six in two thousand fourteen, probably along with the, uh, uh, training chief at that time. And then the following years, we'd just keep adding the six till we got to our twenty, and by two thousand seventeen, we'd be fully staffed and hopefully the station would be up and running.
Okay. Councilman Lehman.
Now, then you'd need some trucks to put in that building.
We have the trucks that will spread out throughout the fleet.
Essentially, one grass rig.
Yes.
Okay. You said the, uh, insurance rating agency, whatever it was on the slide, was, your mouse said nonprofit, your sl- slide said for-profit. So I was wondering which one it was.
It's for-profit. If I said nonprofit, it was my mistake. I'm sorry.
And then, I'm trying to figure out if, if, if we're gonna hire a training chief or a, a daytime crew, are we gonna post this throughout the metro area for individuals to apply?
Chris, do you wanna talk about?
I would, yeah.
Selection process?
I would think we need to decide what we're doing.
I think you need to decide if that's the solution to your problem first, and then, you know, the chief and I can come up with a draft plan of how we would go about that. There's certainly advantages to hiring internal, you know, individuals that know our city geographically, that know our standard operating guides, a lot less training to get them up and running. But that's certainly, you know, up for discussion if you make the decision that we're gonna hire, um, that we're gonna hire full-time people. You know, there's, how do we go about selecting them? What are the minimum qualifications gonna be? All of those factors, but those all come after you decide, you know, whether or not the council supports hiring daytime firefighters. So we can lay, work out all those details and bring them back to you at a future meeting, um, if that's the route that you want the city to go. At this point, I would think those aren't necessarily deciding factors, though, as to whether or not we need to do daytime or not.
Okay, further questions?
So it sounds like everything that you're recommending is the same that we have, or, or tentatively budgeted?
That is correct.
So we wouldn't have, need to be tonight making any, having a discussion about changing what's already tentatively been talked about? Just looking at a commitment to sticking with it?
That is correct.
This is primarily a budget discussion tonight and in December. Certainly, it will come back to you next year for the actual authorization to go out to hire the six or the four or whatever you choose to do.
Okay. Councilman Lehman.
I would like to see if, if we could cover the South Bridge area in a timely fashion out of Station One with a duty crew. I know we can during the day, but I wanna make sure the nights covered, and then if we could not need that station out there, we'll have it, we'll, I wanna make sure we have the fire coverage, but not, not necessarily the station in that area or that truck in the area. Then the second thing I'd like to investigate is whether we can pay more for daytime response and/or reimburse businesses for letting employees go.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor. We talked about the problems with duty crews, with right now, we don't have enough staffing for that. So, I mean, if you want us to relook at that, it's likely gonna be the same response that we have. We've got forty-six available firefighters and we've got to cover, um, seventeen, uh, eighty, sixty?
Sixty slots in a week.
Sixty slots during the week, so that's one of the reasons why there's money budgeted and this year's budgeted and we haven't brought it back to 'cause we've looked at the reality of that and just, it's just not something that works very well with a department our size. Bloomington, Eden Prairie can get away with it because they've got a hundred and twenty firefighters.
Right. Well, okay, I didn't, maybe I didn't mean du- du- uh, duty crews, and I meant the, the four people in the station, whatever you wanna call them.
Full-time.
Whatever it is, full-time, but I'm not really a fan of that either, but I'd like to see if there's alternatives. I'd like to see if, if we could get enough daytime response out of, you know, the fifty volunteers or, I think we had fifty paid-on-call at one point. But, uh, if we could get enough daytime response out of them folks by either, uh, offering an incentive pay for daytime response or reimbursing the employers, um, we don't know until we try that. And, you know, so I, I, I don't know what the answer is until we, you know, until we do try something like that. And then I, I, if, if that doesn't pan out, then I guess I would like to know if, if we did have a full-time crew in Station One, which is Verling, Verling Station, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, they can cover South Bridge in a timely fashion, but then will our nights be covered? And we need to gather that information because I know you have that information, we just don't have it available tonight.
Well, you have to, I can interject, if the nights are, are already being covered currently, why would they not be after adding four full-time people?
Yeah, and I guess I don't know if the nights are covered already, if they're meeting that timeline.
They're not meeting the timeline already, yeah.
At, in South Bridge.
Okay.
Councilman Clay.
I don't wanna do both if I don't have to.
And, and, and there's some logic to that. I'm wondering if the, um, if we do go with the full, the four full-time and, and six paid-on-call, or adding six paid-on-call firefighters initially, we would have a year or so to tell us, you know, what kind of, how it, are those full-time people, how is that affecting our response times to South Bridge? If it's so good that, we, well, maybe we'll decide that we don't need Station Three by two thousand seventeen, but maybe it's some other later date. But we, we've got a year or so to, uh, get them in place and, and see how those response times work out. And if we also start initially adding the, the six paid-on-call firefighters, you know, two years from now, if it turns out we're, we're not gonna be building or, or staffing a third station as soon as we thought, those six, I mean, the way things are looking, I, just through attrition, we would, you know, those six people would, you know, be, would've been needed in the next year or two anyway, just to replace retiring firefighters. So we're kinda covered either way. If we, if we don't need them, fine, we'll just won't need to be doing any hiring or additional hiring soon, and if we do need them, you know, we've already got to start on staffing and training for a third station. It kinda, it seems like we'd, we'd be able to kinda cover all of our bases for the next couple of years anyway, and see how it goes.
Okay. Councilman Whiting.
Yeah, I think over time, as the city's grown, I don't think the fire department has grown with it. I think, uh, we should've been ramping up for many years now, adding more and more firefighters because of the fact that, you know, you don't have all the people turn out for every fire. You, you have percentage, thirty-five percent is all you need to meet. Uh, I don't wanna, I don't think we need to add, increase that at all. I just think we need more firefighters to, and then be the paid-on-call. I, I don't, I don't like the idea of hiring the full-time firefighters. I think we should be ramping up faster, sooner. Uh, I think we need the Station One. I do like the idea of responding to one station during the daytime. Uh, and I wasn't sure if you did that now or not. If everybody responds to one station, it seems like you get a truck out faster. I like the idea of the premium pay or, or reimbursing employers. I don't know if that can be done, but I think that's a, that's novel idea and I don't know if it's being done. I just think we need to ramp it up and, uh, that, the third station is needed, uh, just to cover that area and to keep people's insurance ratings, uh, down there. It may take a little more, more time, but I think, I think if we get more and more, uh, volunteers trained, up and running, I'd even say more than six if we avoid the, uh, the six full-time.
Four full-time.
Well, yeah, four, 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 four full-time, six paid-on-call. I think if we go to ten paid-on-call and get them trained faster and get it up to, uh, seventy-five, eighty firefighters, that maybe our daytime response, you know, issues will, will subside.
Councilman Lehman.
I'm not in favor of a full-time crew either, yet. I, I'm trying to figure out how to make sure we got daytime response without having full-time because I think it's gonna open Pandora's box and it's gonna be harmful to the whole department in general.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not really in favor of that either, yet. I mean, if, if push comes to shove and it's the only resort we've got to, to have service, I mean, that's what you gotta do, but I'm, I'm not there yet to that, tonight. So I would like to pursue some of them other options, and until we know if the other options pan out, it really has a bearing on whether Station Three comes into play. So there's, everything's hinging on something else here.
Right, with that being said, let's focus here a little bit, which, in everyone's opinion, makes the most sense to really talk about and make a ninety percent decision here. First, do we wanna talk about the third fire station and make decisions on that? Or do we wanna talk about the full-time employees first and make a decision on that? What makes the most sense discussion and flow-wise? 'Cause I don't know.
You run the meeting, that's why you're the mayor.
Yeah, no, I'm asking opinions.
You got the premium pay for that, to decide that.
Thanks so much for that one. Okay, let's talk about third, Councilman Sherman.
Okay, so it just seems like our discussion, the way that it is going at this point in time, is the staffing seems to be leading everyone's mind in terms of then driving the third station. So at least that's my interpretation of the conversation, is the staffing issue seems to be the primary issue at this point. Because if we're talking either full-time or paid-on-call additional, because if the recommendation from the chief is, let's talk about twenty-seventeen for the third station, we're all now feeling, well, gosh, that's giving us some time to figure out the staffing piece first, so...
Staffing it is. Thank you for your help.
Yes.
I appreciate that much more than Councilman Lehman. Councilman Clay.
It was my impression that the, the major concern here wasn't the, the third station as much as it was solving our problem with daytime response. And it's, if I'm understanding everything tonight correctly, the daytime response, the only way to address that is with the four full-time firefighters, daytime firefighters. I just, I just, I mean, doing that, we know that we're, we, well, as, as much as we can, we, we know that that is going to solve our problem for a while. But hiring, simply hiring more paid-on-call firefighters, we're, we're guessing as to whether that's gonna help daytime response or not. It's gonna be just the luck of the job of who applies and whether their employer will let them go during the day, which is, well, with business the way it is now and, and profits, you know, employees are expected to work much harder and much more efficiently and, and, you know, doing more with less, and it, I don't see that pressure on businesses changing anytime soon unless we all of a sudden don't need to compete with the rest of the, the rest of the world anymore. I, I just don't see how we can get around our daytime response time issues just by hiring more paid-on-call firefighters.
I agree with you, unless we can, um, talk to businesses and actually make a concerted effort, which I don't know if we've done yet, to, currently, we had to obviously live within ten minutes of fire station, but if we look at Seagate and look at Home Depot and look at all the other, the businesses in town and talk to them and say, hey, we need people who not, don't necessarily live within Shakopee, but can train and can report daytime fires. I, I think there's a pool of people there that we could possibly tap into, and I would hate to hire four full-time folks in perpetuity without having explored that first. Do you have any thought whether that would work? Whether that has been done other places? Chris has a thought.
Chris has. I, I can tell you, um, um, the only, um, fire department that I know in the area that does something like that is Golden Valley. Um, it's a very complicated structure they have up there. But in turn, they do, they do, I don't know if they give any incentives to their employees to let them go. We actually have a, a firefighter on Shakopee that will, actually responds to Golden Valley when he works up at his business up there. In that, they still have four full-time people that respond to all the calls that don't require paging everybody out for. So, yes, he's on that department, but he isn't running for every call. Their companies won't let him do that, so they actually went out and hired four full-time people to take care of the initial call, and then if they need them, they call them in. So, I, I think it's been tried in other places, um, and with no success.
Councilman Clay.
You brought up another point that I was curious about, in that have you tried to crunch any numbers as to how much money we would be saving from what we're currently spending for paid-on-call firefighters? You know, mobilizing every time there's a, you know, a radiator steam coming out of a car and somebody calls in a car fire on one sixty-nine or, you know, false fire alarms, things like that, that during the day that a, this, you know, full-time dirty crew could, you know, dispatch and then come back five minutes later. But rather than mobilizing a bunch of paid-on-call people and...
If you would've asked me that question last November when I was in front of you, I would've been able to answer it, 'cause we did crunch that number.
Maybe Chris remembers it.
We haven't done it recently. Our, our payroll records don't record the time of day that they're being paid for. It records total number of hours. Um, so it takes, we can go back through the paper documents and say, okay, these three calls were during daytime hours. How many people responded? How many to pay? We can come up with that, but we don't have it off the top of our head. Um, I stood up in large part to say similar to what the chief said, which is, I've reached out to my counterparts in other cities and said, hey. Has anybody thought about or done, changed their minimum requirements? Instead of saying you must reside within a ten-minute response time, you must. Say you must reside or work within a ten-minute response time. The only one we can turn up is the city of Golden Valley, and as the chief said, they still have their four daytime people, and they're a bigger department than we are, aren't they?
I believe so, yes.
You know, you, we can certainly, we can do that. We can go out and meet with businesses and talk to businesses about the challenge we're having and. Ask them to think long and hard about their civic responsibility and would they be willing to, you know, let their employees go to come to fire calls? You know, but I think when they look at how much their property taxes would go, what their share of this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars it's gonna cost us to have four people is. Versus the cost to their business of letting that person go. Like theirs, you know, their share of just paying higher property taxes is gonna be a lot less to them than the cost to their business of letting their employees go. With zero notice, you never know when it's gonna happen, whether it's gonna be a convenient time. You're also looking at, again, as the chief noted, to get, we can expand the pool of paid on call to try to get more daytime responders. Just your odds, your statistics. If we have a bigger pool to draw from, we should get more daytime responders. That means you're training all of those people every month. You're equipping all of those people. You're paying a pension on all of those people. You know, every year. So now we've got sixty or sixty-five bodies that we're training every Monday night and paying them for their training. We're buying gear for them. Um, we're paying the same pension contribution for all of them if they meet their thirty-five percent. Just seems like we're twisting ourselves in knots to avoid the two hundred and fifty thousand, and I'm not sure some of those other efforts aren't going to cost. Just as much at the end of the day, by the time you pay wages and, and eventually, we're at a breaking point on our training chief too. We train once a week, Monday nights. So council member Sherman, we, as the chief noted. Our first question on that, both the written application form and then we re-ask it in the interview is, are you available for daytime calls? You know, and you find somebody that says, yes, I work nights, I'm available during the day. Great, but can you take every Monday night off? Because that's the only night and the only time we have the resources to provide training. That's oftentimes a deal breaker for anybody that works nights. So we're back around hiring a training chief full-time so that we can train Monday nights and Thursday mornings, or Monday nights and Wednesday afternoons, or whatever it turns out to be. So. Not a lot of easy answers or very many models to follow. You look at other departments and. You know, the answers I got back was only Golden Valley is using people that work in their community, and they're doing that on top of having four full-time people not. To replace the need for four full-time pay.
All right, so with the four full-time, I still don't understand. Why we need to go from where we're at now to four more full-time? If we're looking for, um, not, if the fact that we're looking for daytime response on things currently. We're waiting for. Three or four people to get to the station. And I'm assuming, um, that we have a couple of people to get there right away and we're waiting for the third or fourth. Kinda thing. Why wouldn't having. An additional one person full-time now improve that response that we're not waiting? Why, why do we have to have four there, sitting there all the time? Why can't we have one to increase who we've got sitting there and then still wait for the additional paid on call to show up? I don't understand why we have to have that entire full crew sitting there. Why can't it be a hybrid kinda thing?
It comes down to a guarantee. With four people, I can guarantee my response time. With one or two people, I'm still guessing when they're going to be there.
We've been doing that for a long time though.
We have been, and we've been very fortunate.
So why do we have to, to jump all the way in this with four right now? Why can't we just guarantee?
Cause odds are, we're not gonna remain fortunate much longer.
Or we could jump further. We could put a fire truck on every corner.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is what, where's our, where's our point? Where's our, our flex point? I, so two things with me, I don't, um. I don't see. Especially out in Southbridge. I've heard zero from people concerned about the fact that there's no fire station out there. I went around and knocked on every single door in the entire Southbridge, uh, development. And not a single person said anything to me about a fire station out there. And.
Probably town home behind Home Depot that'll mention that now though. There's probably hasn't been a lot of fires out there, and I think if it starts affecting people, then, then it, you'd have that talk.
Right, but what would, what would two, okay, we'll take that fire as a very good example. What would saving three minutes on that fire have gotten us?
We would've saved more than three minutes. We would've saved. Three to four minutes, I'll give you that. When I arrived there at, with, uh, within five minutes, five and a half minutes, we had a room and contents fire. I watched that fire crawl up the side of the house, take the roof off and the neighbor's roof off. If that truck would've been on my. Rear of my truck, we would've been in there, put the fire out, would've never extended for sure into the second residence. We lost a second residence on that fire because of our response time.
Okay, that being said, is that?
You suspect you would've lost a second. Boy, I don't know if I'd go on record saying that's a for sure on that one. You highly suspect that would be the outcome.
Our guys are very good. I'm proud of what they do.
So is that. Type of response to us if we look at, um. The four full-time, is that. Worth two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year to us?
It's the cost of a, it's less than the cost of an average house in Shakopee.
Got him in poverty.
That's not less than the average house in Shakopee.
It's greater than the average house, isn't it?
What is the average house?
About forty K or fifty K?
No, I think the average is like one ninety-two. That's not a point that we need to worry about right now.
It's one point two seven average houses.
Two twenty-one. Julie says, since she's not up at the microphone.
So if we round up to two fifty, we're there, you know?
Right. Right. Councilor Lehman.
Mayor, I'm still with Councilor Whiting. I think I'd like to pursue all avenues possible to have a good daytime response without hiring full-time folks.
And I'm thinking we can still do that, but, and stay of the course that we've tentatively budgeted. It gives us a, two or three months to see if there is any interest at all out there in the businesses in Shakopee. As far as, you know, getting, receiving money for letting their firefighters leave. We're, we're talking about filling those positions until mid-year.
So you're taking, take, saying, take six months and see if we could find daytime response firefighters, is that what you're saying?
Six, seven, eight months. From today, you know, it gives us a couple of months easily to, you know, explore that and see if there's any interest at all in the business community in Shakopee. With that idea and. If we keep it in the budget, the four full-time firefighters in the budget. And if we find there's no interest or not enough interest of, in the businesses to, that we're talking about, then. The money's there in the budget to go ahead with the four full-time. If we find there is a significant interest out there, the money's in the budget, we would just redirect it. Towards hiring more, um, paid on call firefighters. To help with future staffing as well as hopefully getting a few more that work in town that would now be able to. Have a little bit more ease of getting out of work to respond to a fire.
Okay, Councilor Sherman.
Or we could not authorize and not. Hire the four full-time at that point in time and just not spend that budgeted.
Yeah, just, just cause in the budget, I mean, we're, we have to spend it.
Right.
Right.
If something, a better plan comes along to, or becomes more clear to us in a few months.
Okay. Councilor Whiting.
I like the idea of exploring those options. I'm not sure where we'd get with them. I'm, I'm also willing to compromise and maybe, um. Add the, like you said, Mr. Mayor, the one position or, um, maybe it's a maintenance position that, uh. Works on the trucks and can respond and does some of the facilities things, uh. So working our direction, at least have, change our percentage a little bit. I, I could be flexible there. Maybe it's that training chief that. Can respond during the day and takes Mondays off to do the Monday night training or however that works, cause that's still. In, in your thought pattern, a training person, right?
Yeah, as we increase our paid on call staff, we're going to have to have a training.
Right, so maybe that's a responding person during the day. Just to play with the percentages a little bit and hopefully get that response time better, but I do like the idea of exploring all the options.
Councilor Sherman.
It's actually, you're on to something there. That's a good idea. If we were to hire a second training chief that could respond during the day. And also do daytime training and to enable us to hire people that work nights. I mean, there's, there could be something there, I think.
Um, but that's still, I, I can't stand here and guarantee you a response time off.
Right.
We're, we're working in that direction. Trying to compromise.
I understand, and I just, you, you, you need to be comfortable with what. The staffing levels you give me, you have to be comfortable with the response time that I'm gonna be able to give our residents.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, Chris did put up a good argument. I think that she does have some. All the people you're training still doesn't, doesn't get you the response every time, and so we need to. Think about all the money we'd invest in there and maybe still not get our response we want during the day. So somewhere in the middle, I think we need to meet.
Councilor Lehman.
Well, and I think where I was trying to go earlier was. If we try these options and maybe we do this training chief for one person to respond, plus we've got a couple of public works and a couple of work here, whatever, and if we still. Try all these options and don't get enough. And the chief pulls up the statistics of, of a response time at night from station one to Southbridge. And that meets the response time requirements. By going to the four full-time and not putting a station there and still having the coverage in a time allotted. From station one into Southbridge, you might be able to not have that station out there. So you, you might be able to save not building and equipping and operating that building to cover your full-time staffing.
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to that, I, I think you said, chief, that you're still not, even at nights and weekends, you still have a nine-minute response to Southbridge, don't you?
It's going, my rough estimate guess right now would be ten to eleven minutes.
So that's still outside our window, that nine-minute window that we're trying to achieve.
Nine's pretty good.
Well, that night, that's where we wanna be. Wasn't it nine?
That's what the national standard is for us, yes.
We wanna be at nine, but we're at ten to eleven minutes.
Right, but daytime is, seems to be the issue, not the nighttime, because nighttime, you got a lot more response.
Right, but see, I think.
You're here in town after work.
I think the, the station issue is separate. I mean, we need to move in that direction to avoid that ten to eleven minute response time. Nighttime, even on, you know, the best, best of times, I'm, I'm saying here.
But I, I think you're missing it. I, maybe I'm missing it, but.
Maybe I can clarify. If, if we build the station out there, our, our nighttime response will come out of that station. So it'll improve the response time out there with not having to worry about the people coming out of station one or station two. During the day, if we hired a full-time people, we can cover the whole city.
Right.
But you, you currently can't get from station one to Southbridge during the day.
Not in nine minutes.
In nine minutes.
No.
With the full-time crew, you can. Nighttime, nighttime, currently, you can probably get from station one to Southbridge nine to ten minutes.
Ten to eleven, yeah.
Because there's so many people that are in Shakopee after work and they can respond, cause we have a lot of nighttime responders.
Correct, so the, because the full-time people are sitting at the station.
Correct. I am, with what you just said, Councilor Lehman, I am. I am comfortable saying. Ten, eleven minutes is a response time that we've got out to Southbridge. I, I am comfortable with that being our standard. I don't, when we're talking about third station, out in Southbridge. I don't see it. I don't, I don't see a third station. Built at three million dollars, plus three quarters of a million dollars a year to run, um, as. Being. The best use of our tax dollars. I, I, I don't see that third station out in Southbridge. If that was completely built out, out there and all the land that the tribe now owns was all homes and that was gonna serve five to six thousand. Homes as opposed to three thousand homes, I, I, I can see that, cause that could spread over a much larger tax base out there. But I just. I do not see. The great need for a third station out there, which. To me, as I back into the discussion that we're having, the third station to me, we're talking about adding. Paid on call firefighters to ramp up for the third station. The chief isn't asking for paid on call firefighters to, for what we're doing today. Cause that won't solve our problem. So we're talking about either hiring full-time or paid on call. And unless we're building a third fire station. He is not asking for paid on call. Am I correct in that?
Well, the, the six paid on call that are in the preliminary budget are to ramp up.
For the third fire station.
Correct.
So, with, I'm having a hard time having. The discussion when I don't, I don't think that we need to have the third fire station out there. And I'm also having a hard time if, with all this that we're talking about tonight, in the year. Twenty seventeen, we're moving directly, we're moving in the direction of adding. Uh, well over a million dollars. Into our operating budget for fire safety in the year twenty seventeen. If, if both of these things go in, that's. That's where we're headed, and that's the direction it takes us, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. I, I know there's always the fear of a, a catastrophic event and a, someone. Dying in a house fire. I, I really do understand that, but I. I don't know, there's no guarantee. Any way you put it, that that's not gonna happen. No matter if we have the very best. Response time in the entire country, there, there's still gonna be the risk of things happening. So I don't think we can, even with a guaranteed response time, I don't think we can mitigate our risk far enough down. To justify paying that amount of money, and our ISO ratings out there are. In, in Southbridge and for, and for the city are not any different if we have a third fire station or not. Cause right now, all the people out there.
It would lower the ISO rating.
Potentially.
Tell me again.
It'll potentially lower our S, I, our ISO rating, because we'd have a fire, a fire truck out there within a mile and a half of that residence. Right now, we don't.
I know, but we still have within the city, a significant amount of the city that's outside the mile and a half radius.
They take the whole city and look at it as a group and what percentage is covered, what is not. Once you get over that percentage, it could increase our ISO rating.
Right, but we've still got the entire area Lego Dowd. We've got anything we annex, Marystown plus, any.
Nonetheless, mayor, even if it, even if it dropped our ISO by one number, it, it doesn't justify the expense.
It doesn't pay for it.
Right.
Now, whereas the, the smaller number of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for four full-time firefighters. If we look at that ISO rating, not going in the opposite direction of getting worse. If it, we went to a six instead of a five, and you, you're hinting that it sounds like we're probably due for an ISO review.
I, I wouldn't.
Soon.
I wouldn't put it past it in the next couple of years, no.
If we were to jump from the current five up to a six, the when you look at all of the increased insurance costs across the entire city, this two hundred and fifty thousand is gonna look pretty small compared to that.
But the two hundred and fifty thousand won't affect our ISO rating. Four full time won't affect our ISO rating.
It's the physical structure.
Right.
Well, if it keeps our daytime responses.
It's still not a physical structure within the.
Right.
Up mile and a half.
And that makes us feel better.
It doesn't do the, it doesn't do the mileage of coverage, but I ISO is also looking at response times, right?
No. The truck, within a mile and a half.
Then never mind.
Council Sherman?
So how quickly potentially could we prepare, just as an example of how to pursue like the businesses, for example? So it seems that it would be appropriate that maybe the mayor and the chief, when could we have the data or information together to like go talk to the chamber and the business owners in town and talk about what that might look like and where they might be at in terms of daytime response and encouraging their associates to be paid on call firefighters. I I don't know what kind of timing that looks like, because it seems like, I mean, I like what Council Clay said about okay, so the four full time, we have that as a staff recommendation. It's a July one date. We've got it in the bu- preliminary budget now, so that gives us between now and whenever the chief would come to the council and ask for authorization to hire um to get some of that other work done. So is that feasible? Is that, you know, is that a timeframe that makes sense, that we could get those answers or make those presentations?
So you're saying for the money we have budgeted for the four full time, if we could look at that as paid on call, daytime response, people working here, that type of thing?
Well, I'm just talking from a.
Time and if it if it wouldn't work, then use it for the four full time?
Potentially. So you've got it in the budget, it's a July one. What can we accomplish between now and the time that we would need to ask for, he would need to ask for authorization to hire to potentially solve in some of these other ways with the other ideas that came up tonight? Like, is that sufficient time? Does it make sense to leave that four full time in there and that gives us sort of a deadline to work through these other ideas?
If we do go out and we decide that's the path that the council wants to take, I would be standing here in front of you and asking you for a full time training chief at that time. Because to train them people, I they would probably have to come in on a different night. It all depends how many people we bring in.
Councilman?
I think you're gonna have to, at a minimum, leave the the two fifty in for the four full time and the training officer, just until you figure out where this is going. Because then if you end up doing it, you've got you've got it budgeted and if you don't, and let's say you hire the one full time firefighter and one full time firefighter slash training chief guy, then you're covered. If you don't do that and you do something else, working with the businesses and so on and so forth, that's fine too. So you're covered kind of both ways.
Do we have a training?
That's what I was gonna say. At this point, there is no training chief budgeted for two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
Council Sherman?
However, if we get to that point in time and determine it makes more sense to hire one full time training chief than four full time firefighters based on where we're at, that may be the way to spend those budget dollars, correct?
Correct. That's Clay.
Wouldn't, or couldn't a full time training chief be counted in the four full time daytime response?
He could be, he could be a, what we consider a truck chief. So he would be on the truck responding.
I think he's asking about the dollars that are allocated for the four full time. So.
Well, I mean.
One point something of that four position would be allocated for a training.
A training chief is gonna cost you wage and benefits somewhere around a hundred thousand. So that leaves you roughly. Huh?
It's a higher.
Correct.
Than the four.
Yeah, so that leaves you at the six month period, twenty five thousand dollars to spend elsewhere.
It's a rough economy. If we go out in the open market for a fire tra- cha- training chief, um we'll get a less than that.
I'm pretty sure we'll have to pay going rate.
Okay, so what I'm hearing so far, um and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that at this point, we're comfortable with moving forward with the four paid on, uh not sorry, with the four full time firefighters, starting July first of twenty thirteen in the budget as we are, as we currently are. Before we go to hire those four full time firefighters, we want to look at um possibilities of daytime response within the business community before we go toward hiring the full time. You guys had some questions down there? What?
I don't think I'm ready to budget for those four. I I'd like to see it. We make a decision before December here, when we have to certify that levy, that we're gonna do do something here. We're gonna one, two, make the decision for four, but uh whatever it is, or it's, and then also that decision, I guess, does apply for those six paid on call with Station Three, so I think we need to make those decisions so we can certify that levy.
I will rephrase what I said there. Keep the twenty, two hundred and fifty grand in the budget to be used either for.
However.
Paid on call, and if if we, we have six months here to look at that and see if that could work, and if it doesn't, then make a decision if we're just adding four full time, one full time, more paid on call, whatever it is, from there.
Council Sherman?
Um, the other piece, in addition to um investigating within the bu- business community, the support of having their employees potentially be paid on call um was the incentive pay.
Reimbursement.
For daytime reimbursement potential and also, you know, even.
Premium pay for the firefighters during for daytime calls.
Correct. The premium pay for daytime and then um even what Council Whitey said in terms of maybe it's additional credit, like you get a one and a half credit for a daytime response or a two credit towards your percentage requirement of thirty five percent.
Okay.
I mean, I think exploring all of those seems to make sense.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
The issue is, is we probably need more time than between now and certifying.
Five weeks before you have to make that decision, which is gonna be.
Right, so that's why I'm comfortable with leaving some in the budget to.
You guys.
Just just as we look at that thirty five percent, as long as they make the thirty five percent, they're getting their pension for a year of service. So if we we don't have people not making their years of service, they're getting their seventy five hundred. So giving them two points for recall or a point and a half, I think is not gonna change anything, because if they're out there looking just for their pension of seventy five hundred dollars per year of service, they have to make the thirty five percent. Once anything over that, there's no money incentive for them to do it.
But it's easier to make at two to one ratio.
So I'd have them at less calls.
Correct.
You have them at less calls.
You'd have them at the premium call is what you'd have. The call that you most need them at is where they'd be.
Maybe.
Potentially.
Mr. Mayor, I'd add, I mean, if you're going to offer them more money to come to daytime calls or more credit towards their pension to come to daytime calls, it seems to me you're operating under the assumption that we have a motivation problem, that we have people that are available, but they're just not coming. So we need to sweeten the pot in order to draw them in. We can certainly survey the in the existing paid on call firefighters, you know, talk to them more about, is there something the city could do that would incentivize you to come to more daytime calls? My hypothesis is we don't have a motivation problem. We have a dedicated group of employees that get up in the middle of the night to come to calls. They leave family obligations to come to calls. I would hypothesize we don't have a motivation problem. We have an availability problem. If your employer says you can't go, are you going to leave that job that pays you forty hours a week each and every week, pays your mortgage, provides you with health insurance in order to come? Similarly, if you're at home with children who are two and five or whatever ages, you don't have a motivation problem. You have an availability problem and no amount of hourly wage is going to incentivize you to come to that call and that thing. Second point I wanted to make really quickly, you, Mr. Mayor, you were talking about having two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget and do we leave it there, do we not? We don't have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The twenty thirteen budget has a hundred and twenty five thousand, which is intended to fund six months' worth of four full time employees. It has another eighty thousand dollars in the preliminary for six new paid on call firefighters. So you have two hundred and five thousand dollars. To your point, you could leave all or a portion of that in the levy, levy it, collect it, while we figure out, do we hire a full time training chief and more paid on call? Do we hire, you know, full time firefighters? What mix of staff do we wanna spend all or a portion of that two oh five on? But you don't have two fifty.
Sorry, I was, in my head, the two fifty in my head was the future, the entire thing, what we need for twenty fourteen and talking about one twenty five while it's the twenty thirteen budget does us no good, because it's really two seventy five in twenty fourteen. So that's what I was talking about in my head, sorry. Uh, Councilman?
Chris, the other question I think that you you missed was, do we know if some of these employees are not responding to daytime calls to leave work because of economics? I mean, you're leaving a job that's paying you thirty dollars an hour for ten bucks an hour. We don't know the answer to that. The only way we're gonna find out the answer to that is if we put an employee, a good employee or a good fireperson on a hot seat and and do you really think they're gonna say to you or anybody else that, you know what? I gotta pay my bills at home. I I I don't wanna leave for ten bucks an hour. I'm more than happy to come at night when I'm not working. And I don't wanna put them in that position, so.
I don't think that, personally, my hypothesis, from what I know of our staff and our ways of operating, I don't think increasing that dollar amount is going to significantly change your daytime response. But we can certainly, you know, survey those employees. Um what motivates one is maybe different than what motivates another and maybe I'll be surprised and my hypothesis will be proven to be wrong and we'll get lots of people that say, you know, yes, that would do it for me. That will change my behavior in response time. We can, we can survey employees and ask them, or we can try it for a year and see, you know, what we actually get. Sometimes the survey results and what you actually get, you know, aren't always the same thing too.
Council Whitey?
I'd have to agree with Chris. I think it, even if it was more money to come to the daytime call, there's always that fear of, oh, now the employer's gonna look at me differently. There's this fear of losing your your regular job that pays, so even if you had the opportunity, you may not wanna take it, because because there's that, eh, you know, I was supposed to get this work done and I I couldn't get it done, because I went to a call. I know he's letting me do it, but how are they really, how's the employer really feeling about it? I I can agree with Chris on that, so.
Okay. All right, so are we all in favor for the twenty thirteen budget of leaving a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in there? With exactly how we spend it the next six months, explore the possibilities of uh what we discussed with looking at premium pays, employers, uh premiums, things like that to to beef up our daytime paid on call. If we can't get that to work out within the next six months and we don't have any traction with it, then July first, we can look at what we need to do for the four full time.
Or do we get a training chief that can respond and one other person or just one or?
You wanna leave the two hundred and five in or the one twenty five?
Well, let's just talk about the one twenty five for right now.
Oh, just because it's for six months.
Okay.
Right, so the one twenty five.
Okay.
It, is there consensus to leave that in the budget right now?
Yeah, we better.
Do you have direction?
I see four or five heads nodding, keeping that in, okay?
Yes, and we are, we are five oh on that. All right, eighty thousand dollars for six new paid on call firefighters. Um, this, these six are specifically for ramping up for building a third station in Southbridge. I am not in favor of leaving these this eighty grand in there. I don't think that we need to. In a perfect world, we would build the fire station out there, but like Matt said, we'd in a perfect world, we'd have a fire truck on every corner. To get every spark and everything like that. I am I'm more than willing to say today, no, we're not gonna build the third fire station out there unless there are significant changes in in the future and then future councils can revisit it as they need to. But I would like to find some way to put a definitive, yes, this eighty grand puts us on the direction of building the fire station in twenty seventeen. We need to have the money and the referendum and or whatever it takes, we're getting that done and that's where we're committing ourselves in twenty seventeen. Or no, we're not, or we're not right now, but we're gonna re- revisit it in twenty years. I mean, not twenty years, two years, sorry. But I would like some.
I won't be here.
Long range planning.
Right, exactly. Um, but I would like some definitive thought on that tonight as to what we should do, because I know we're split on that. So what does Council Whitey?
I, you know, from uh the beginning, I said I think we need more firefighters, whether it's Station Three or not. So I'm willing to put that money in for those six to ramp up more firefighters and I am for the f- third fire station too, so.
So the the six in addition to the ones, the hundred and twenty five.
Right, I'm willing to leave that eighty thousand in, because I think we need to move in that direction.
Okay. Who's next? Council Clay?
I'll agree.
The issue to me isn't that station being there. The issue is the response time to that area in the city. So that station doesn't, to me, doesn't fix the response time, whether it's whether it's there or not. And it is until twenty seventeen, so it doesn't need to be there for next year in the budget.
Well, it needs to be in there for next year for the budget, so we can get the paid on call.
We have to, we have.
I don't, I don't believe it has to be in the budget for next year.
Well, we're not just gonna, in twenty seventeen, pull twenty five firefighters out of thin air.
No, but you're not gonna, you're, the issue, like I said, isn't, isn't having that station there. The issue is having a response time to that area. And and I don't see that station as making that response time any better, because of what's gonna happen. Instead of having that station is, if we can't get the response time, we're gonna end up putting people in Station One that can respond immediately to that area, which covers Southbridge. So I don't need to cover Southbridge twice.
Right.
Not at night.
But not at night.
Night is not an issue to me. A ten minute response time is not a problem with me.
So then you're saying we don't need those, that eighty grand?
No.
At all?
No.
So are you saying that you're, we don't need a third fire station out there, period, or revisit it sometime in the future, or what are you saying?
It can be revisited in the future, but I don't, I don't think we're gonna need it.
Okay. Council Sherman?
Yeah, I think we can take the eighty grand out of next year's budget. I think the third fire station can be revisited eventually, maybe in a couple of years, but it it doesn't seem necessary at this point in time.
All right, so you.
To plan for twenty seventeen.
So that means that we're pushing a third fire station out to twenty nineteen at the earliest.
Or we're gonna find before then that we've got a full time crew that can cover that area in a timeframe that makes us believe that we don't need that station for covering that area.
Right, exactly. Yeah, I I get what you're saying there. Chief, Chris?
The the question is, is, um, it's always been in our CIP. Do you want it left in the CIP or should we just take it up?
But I would leave it in there for next couple of years and revisit it two years.
I would pull it out for two years. What, if we're not gonna build it? I mean, if if this is the vote of council, I would, and we're not gonna build it in twenty nineteen, we should pull it out of CIP. I mean, if it's not gonna be built, it shouldn't be in there.
You don't pull stuff out of the CIP, you just move it farther down the calendar line.
Kick it down the road.
All right.
It's been moved from two thousand three to two thousand seventeen now, so.
Every year.
Right, okay.
Push it out for two years.
Well, we got the land, though.
I would, we do have the land, we own it.
You know, we're, we're moving.
Thousand dollars in and out.
We're not there yet. I don't know yet. We're not there yet.
It's you.
It's you.
Oh, no, I'm, I was gonna have a vote on it since we're split. Do we not wanna vote on it since we're split?
Vote it.
We just need consensus tonight.
It's a workshop, we need consensus.
Someone wants to make a motion, we can certainly take that as a consensus.
I would rather have a motion on it since we're split.
Councilman?
I make a motion to take the eighty thousand for the six uh paid on call firefighters out of the two thousand three budget. Twenty thirteen budget.
The motions should always be made in the positive.
My, uh positive, I'm I'm asking to remove it.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Senator, Council Sherman, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, we, it passes three to two.
Remove that?
To remove eighty grand. Um and then let's also talk about what we wanna do with the third station.
Want that by motion?
What?
Would you like a motion for that?
I would.
Councilman?
Make a motion to keep the uh fire station three in the uh CIP, but to move it out a couple of years.
Give us a little more definitive on a couple of years. Give us a little more definitive on a couple of years.
Three.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Sherman. Any discussion on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed on that.
Stays in for where it is.
Well, we can always have another motion. Cuz I, well, I I I voted against it for different reasons than that cuz I don't think it should be in the CIP at all.
Oh, let's not split so many years.
All right. Okay, so then I voted incorrectly on that.
Somebody wanna make another motion?
I'm sorry. Counselor Sherman.
I would like to make a motion to leave the third fire station in the CIP, however, move. The timing of it. To twenty twenty.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
All right, passes three to two.
Could we, just since we're in the mood to make motions, just.
Move to adjourn?
The the one hundred twenty five thousand dollars, we got a consensus on that cuz somebody put that in a formal motion so we can act on that.
No.
Please. I'll move that we leave the hundred twenty five thousand dollars for six. Months of. Funding for the four full time firefighters.
Counselor Whiting.
I'll second it cuz then I get to speak to it first.
There you go.
I think the wording of the motion is inaccurate. I think the motion should be to keep the hundred twenty five thousand in the budget for to be determined later and how that money is spent. It could possibly be a training officer and another full time fire person. It could be four just straight up fire guys and then we have to find other budget amendments for a training person. So I I think that to specifically say what it's for is, I don't know if that's the right way to go, but.
Counselor Clay?
Yes.
To accept the.
The friendly, if not long amendment?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
As I understand, that that would be to provide for fire department personnel funding to be determined.
Correct.
Yes.
As we see fit.
Right. All right, so it's motion's made, seconded. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Further discussion, I should say. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. You guys have any other questions that you need answered from us tonight?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Item four, other business?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on our calendar, we have tentatively scheduled November thirteenth, another workshop regarding the fire department. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And should we make a determination if we need that meeting or not at this point in time?
You may certainly do that.
Counselman.
I think it's gonna be too early from this meeting to have any good discussion on where we're at. That soon.
I understood your motion, if I could, that by, let's say, April first of next year, we have to have had discussions with whether it's the chamber, other employers or and see what. You know, other incentives may be out there. I certainly wasn't thinking it was going to be.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Correct. So I just wanted to call that out and just make sure, do we need that or not?
Right, I don't, yeah, I don't think we need.
I don't think we do.
The second meeting unless we all just like to get together. I mean, it's always fun.
We'll have plenty of opportunities for other things, I'm sure.
All right, um, do you need us to make a motion for that or anything?
Or we'll just remove it?
Or we adjourn.
We'll just move as long as there's consensus that it's not needed, we'll cancel.
All right, Counselor Whiting.
Motion to adjourn Wednesday, November seventh, seven P M.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Correct. Wednesday, exactly.
Seven P M.
Second by Counselor Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. We are adjourned at eight fifty five.
Carmel Apple.
Really? I haven't seen those.
Carl Apple Milky Way, huh?
Nice. I'll go in here and I'll find it like in a couple of days and go.